I declare this meeting open for the transaction of any business which may properly come before it. The city of Moose Jaw is located within Treaty Four territory, the original lands of Cree, Soto, Dakota, Nakota, and Lakota, and the homeland of Métis Nation. The Nahiwahq translation of Moose Jaw is Musotapskum and is the shared landscape for indigenous peoples and settlers from around the world who call Moose Jaw home. We acknowledge the harms and mistakes of the past, and we are committed to move forward in equal partnerships with indigenous nations with respect and in the spirit of truth and reconciliation. All council is in chambers today. Next is the confirmation of the agenda. I will need a motion that the agenda for the regular meeting of City Council on Monday, November 25th, 2024 be adopted as presented. I will need a mover, councillor Luning, and a seconder, councillor Eby. All in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. Are there any public acknowledgements by council? Oh, there we are, I'm sorry. Seeing there are councillor Warren.
Thank you. I would like to acknowledge the incredible work of Square One Community and the John Howard Society for the production of a Moose Jaw documentary called A Home to Call My Own. A Home to Call My Own is a 27-minute film that premiered on November 17th at the Public Library and tells the story of Moose Jaw citizens experiencing housing and food insecurity. The individuals that tell their story embody resilience and hope and highlight the strength and spirit that define us all. The film also raises awareness and helps to dispel myths and misconceptions about homelessness in our community. Square One's dedication to telling these stories with such authenticity and compassion is truly inspiring. I highly recommend, the documentary is now available on YouTube, and I highly recommend that anyone wanting to learn more, to take an opportunity to watch A Home to Call My Own. Thank you Square One Community and to all those involved for your outstanding contribution.
Thank you councillor Warren. Councillor Boyle.
Thank you, your worship. I'd just like to rise and publicly recognise the U15 Mavericks team for Moose Jaw. That's a female program who won the Wickfest tournament in Calgary. So, a pretty amazing tournament there in Calgary. It's put on by Canadian Hall of Fame hockey player Haley Wickenheiser. And the team there, I believe they went undefeated in the tournament and ended up winning the whole thing and represented Moose Jaw very well at that. And that tournament is generally recognised as one of the largest female hockey events in Western Canada now, and is an incredible festival as they call it. And I just want to recognise publicly the U15 Mavericks program and all their coaching staff for what they did. And I will say previously, a lot of those players had a very strong coaching staff the year before and myself included, so we'll just take that. But, thank you.
Thank you councillor Boyle. Councillor Logan.
There we go. Thank you, your worship. Just like to rise and recognise that this past weekend held over at the Moose Jaw Event Centre was a Saskatchewan Women's Tour Bonspiel curling event. And congratulate the local team, Team Barker, on winning that event. So, congratulations to those ladies and the fine job they did, and also to the Event Centre on hosting a world-class event again. So, it's kind of becoming old hat for them, but congratulations to everyone. And then lastly, also, I would like to congratulate the Moose Jaw Central Collegiate and Moose Jaw Volleyball, pardon me, Vanye as well for bringing home medals in the 4A Provincial Championship. So, Central claimed gold, I believe, and Vanye was bronze, and that's in the 4A Provincial Volleyball Championship. So, congratulations to those team and their coaches. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Logan. Next, we have the adoption of the minutes. I will need a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of City Council held on Monday, October 21st, 2024, be approved and adopted. I will need a mover. Councillor Warren. A seconder. Councillor Luning, thank you. Excuse me. All in favour? Opposed? And that is carried. I will need a motion that the minutes of the special meeting of City Council held on Monday, November 18th, 2024, be approved and adopted. I will need a mover. Councillor Eby. And a seconder. Councillor Boyle. All in favour? Opposed? And that is carried. Is there any member of council required to declare a conflict of interest on any matter on the agenda? Councillor Logan.
Thank you, your worship. I actually have two items this evening, first being 7C discretionary use application, and lastly would be 14A, the bylaws. They're both regarding the same building, and in fact, that's a building that I would own, so I'll be stepping away for those two discussions. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Logan. Next, we have a public hearing. I will need a motion that we move to enter the public hearing. Councillor Logan. And a seconder. Councillor Eby. And that is carried. Oh, question, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Call into question, my bad. I apologise. Call into question, okay. All in favour? Councillor Luning? We're all in favour, oh, we're all in favour, there we are, and that is carried, okay. Forgot, sorry about that, there we are, okay. Next, I will need a motion that the public hearing be closed and that the bylaw will be introduced and considered during the committee of the whole.
Your worship, if we could just back up one step, please. We just need to ask if there's anyone in the gallery.
Gallery, my apologies, madam city clerk. Is there anyone in the gallery who wishes to address City Council regarding Bylaw Number 5727, zoning bylaw amendment 2024 bracket 5? Seeing none, there we are. Next, I will need a motion that the public hearing be closed and that the bylaw will be introduced and considered during the committee of the whole bylaws section of the agenda. I will need a mover. Thank you councillor Luning, and a seconder. Councillor Warren. All in favour? Opposed? And that is carried. We will now go into committee of the whole. I will need a motion that we now go into committee of the whole under the chairmanship of Deputy Mayor, councillor Logan, to deal with original communications, delegations, and petitions. I will need a mover. Councillor Boyle, and a seconder, councillor Delorye, all in favour? Opposed? And that is carried.
Thank you, your worship, councillor Logan. There we are. Thank you, your worship. Call this meeting for the committee of the whole to order. I have three items this afternoon in committee of the whole. First one being communication 0244 from the Financial Services Department regarding third quarter 2024 financial report. Director Acker?
Thank you, Chair. If I might, I'll give an overview of this report, and then we will open it up for any questions you might have regarding the third quarter 2024 financial reports. So, the purpose of the communication is to provide City Council with information respecting our third quarter of the year. There's a summarised revenue and expenditure report, summarised capital expenditure report, some statistical information, and financial reports from the Moose Jaw Event Centre. So, the rationale and reason for this coming to you on a quarterly basis is for council to exercise their stewardship over the city of Moose Jaw. So, please feel free to ask any questions once we get done. Just, I'll go through in a bit of detail the revenue and expenditure summary. So, I wanted to just start off with page one of that report. And that gives us a summary of revenues for the year. So, in terms of our municipal taxation, it's a good news story this year. We're actually about $460,000 ahead of budget. So, we were generating some additional tax dollars, and that's really been due to assessment growth. We've had some additional assessment growth, more than we had anticipated, and it's providing us with some additional revenues. In terms of our licenses and permits area, you'll see that revenue in this area is behind our 2023 level in terms of revenues collected for licenses and permits, and that really relates around commercial building permits. Unfortunately, for 2024, the level of commercial building permits is not at the level we had budgeted. In terms of investment earnings, we're also seeing a shortfall. We anticipate that this account will end up with several hundred thousand dollars in revenue. Unfortunately, we had budgeted more than that. Part of what is pulling that down is we've had two years of consecutive deficits, so it's depleted a lot of the monies in our general revenue fund, which we would normally earn investment income off of. So, that has been taken into account in the 2025 budget, and an appropriate budget figure will come forward. In terms of revenues, overall total revenues are just shy of $59 million, or 95% of our budget has been collected to the end of September, and when we compare that with last year, we were at $53.2 million. So, certainly in terms of revenues, things are well within target range. In terms of our expenditures, I'll just touch on some of the main areas for the city. So, the general government area currently has expended 71% of budget. We're three-quarters of the way through the year, so we really don't have a lot of concerns with that area. In terms of our protective services, so that is our police service, our fire service, other protective services, other protective services would be things like street lighting as an example. We're sitting at 75% of the budget utilised, and we're three-quarters of the way through the year, so things are basically on budget in that area. In our public works area, again, expenditures are at 75% of budget to the end of the third quarter, and that is a significant improvement over 2023, when we are at 86% at the end of the third quarter. And there's been some significant improvements in a number of expenditure areas, and as I get a little further into the report, I'll give you a bit more detail on that. In terms of our sanitation and waste area, 74% of the budget expended through the first nine months of the year. So, again, looking okay in that area. Our recreation and community services, our expenditures are at 78% of budget, which is below our 2023 level of 82%. And again, very much a seasonal area, recreation and community services for some of the services we provide, so we're comfortable with that as well. Appropriations and subsidies, you'll see expenditures at 97% of budget. The majority of that is appropriations to other funds, so that's a one-time occurrence that occurs in June, so for that to be at that level of expenditure again is not an overly large concern for us. One area I would point out, and we'll touch on it in a little more detail as we go along, is our transit and para-transit subsidies are up significantly this year. They're going to be about 200,000 higher than anticipated. So, to the end of September 30th, we have just over 47 million in expenditures, or 76% of the budget expended. This is down somewhat from last year, when we were actually about 80% of the budget expended. So, overall, if we look at our revenues and expenditures, it looks like the city is very much on target for its budget for 2024. Having said that, there's still three months left in the year in terms of this reporting, so there can be significant changes. And as an example, 1% of our operating budget is a little over $600,000, so it's easy to swing one way or the other. But at this point, we're looking good. One thing I did want to draw your attention to is for 2025, we will be budgeting on a monthly resolution basis, so that will provide us with a lot more resolution to our budget compared to actual, and also provide us the ability to do forecasting moving forward, which should be an aid both to council and administration as we work through our budget each year. Moving on in the report, the summary of detailed expenditures, that's on page three and four of the revenue and expenditure one. I just wanted to touch on a couple of areas. So, our public works area, as I mentioned before, significant improvement over 2023. Of particular note is our workshop and fleet areas. This year, we sit at just a little over a million dollars expended, $1,062,000. Last year, we were at $1,535,000. And the bulk of that difference is in our fleet services area, so it's the amount of monies we're expending on our fleet to maintain it and keep it operational. So, that is very positive improvement for the city. And just that comparison I include in the report, so for 2024, we have a $233,000 loss on our equipment versus last year, we were at $718,000. So, some changes have been made in those areas in terms of what equipment is replaced, and as well, some of the rates were adjusted in the 2024 budget. One thing I would note in public works, which council may be concerned about, is our snow removal budget. As you're aware, we do have a snow removal reserve. There's about $618,000 in that reserve. So, we will certainly keep plowing and keep hauling snow right through the end of the year. We do have reserves to cover that off, so even though we're sort of on budget at this point, we may very well exceed budget, but no concerns, we have reserves set aside for that. And then the only other area of concern in public works that comes up is our roadway maintenance and repairs, which is sitting at 118% of budget, and that's really reflective of 2024 in terms of our pothole and road maintenance. There was a significant amount of maintenance done in 2024, and that's why it's showing up that way. Also, sanitation and waste, the street cleaning business unit sits at 112% of budget expended, so it will be over somewhat at the end of the year. Some of the other areas that may jump out at you as you review the pages three and four, that detailed expenditures. Cemeteries is an example, currently running at 90% of budget expended. We do expect in the fourth quarter, a significant amount of that activity will drop off as we're not cutting grass and doing some of that maintenance. The other thing is, activity has been up at the cemetery, and we're expecting about 44,000 more in revenues, so that kind of offsets those additional expenses. Parks administration and facilities administration appear to have more than 75% of the budget utilised, and that's really just a reallocation of some of the salary and benefits from the previous year. So, again, not an area we're overly concerned with. And then the last one I touch on is third-party programming. It sits at 88% of the budget expended, and that's really, a lot of that is timing issues. Some of our fourth-quarter payments actually end up being made in the third quarter, so it looks like we're over-expended, but we will come in on budget on those. In terms of our transit, waterworks, wastewater and solid waste utilities, I'll just touch on a few things. So, in terms of our transit utility, I did mention that we are experiencing a higher subsidy than we had budgeted, and really, a lot of that centres around vehicle maintenance. Up significantly, 97% of the budget has been expended already to the end of September, and the same goes for our para-transit service. So, those costs are causing us some additional subsidy issues. In terms of our waterworks utility, revenues are at 66% for the year. That's a little below where we would expect them, and again, part of that is it's an accounting activity that we had to do this year, which is an accrual, which will work its way out at the end of the year. One thing I would draw your attention to with waterworks is our overall, our cost of water that we buy from Buffalo Pound is up. We're paying about another $320,000 this year as compared to last year, so that does impact the utility overall. In terms of wastewater utility, revenues are 64% of budget, and again, that accrual that I mentioned is involved in that, but will work its way out at the end of the year. Really, no other areas of concern in terms of budget, other than our service connection costs are up, but you'll also see that the revenues are up to offset that. In terms of solid waste, landfill revenues are trending behind 2023 levels at the end of the third quarter, while expenditures are down as well, sort of offsetting that. That's it for the revenue and expenditure statement, but I just wanted to touch on a few of the others. So, we do provide you with a capital project status report, and I won't go into detail on that, but certainly your operations manager and your director of community services are available to answer questions on that. They manage that area, and one of the things you will note is a lot of those projects are nearing completion or completed at the end of the third quarter, which is positive for the city of Moose Jaw. Those programs are being delivered. In terms of the statistical information section, we provide you with some statistical information. One of them is on property tax arrears. Unfortunately, property tax arrears are up, about $3 million versus 2.1 at the same point last year. We continue our tax collection efforts and working with people for payment plans and those sorts of things as we move through that process. The unfortunate reality is, a lot of people are suffering financial hardships, and we're seeing it reflected in some of our tax arrears. Also included in the statistical section is the amount of borrowing for the city of Moose Jaw. We currently sit at $75.489 million, and the bulk of that relates to our waterworks and Buffalo Pound areas. You'll see as well, June 30th of this year, the last borrowing that we did of $14.3 million has come on to push us up to that $75.489 million. In terms of the Moose Jaw Event Centre, again, has been a very positive year for the Event Centre. When we look at the overall bottom line, right now, we have a overall net loss of $594,000 as compared to a budgeted loss of just over a million dollars. So, great, great improvement in that area this year. Also, in terms of the food and beverage, just shy of 1.6 million in revenues and a net profit of just over $500,000, which has certainly contributed to that reduced bottom line. We do have representatives from the Moose Jaw Event Centre here this evening, so if you have any detailed questions regarding the Event Centre, they'd be happy to answer them. And with that, that would conclude my presentation, and we as administration would be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Acker. Council? Councillor Boyle?
I just have a question on the arrears section there in the statistical information, Mr Acker. Are we, do you have an idea, and maybe this will put you in the spot, about, I mean, obviously, there's a process that goes through for the liens and looking at those properties that we have to go through with the provincial legislation. Are we looking at those for, I mean, $3 million and climbing by, what, $800,000, almost $900,000 is a bit alarming, so, I mean, I understand the hardships and things, but at the end of the day, there is the other percentages of citizens that had to pay theirs and go through that process. So, are we advancing on those or moving? I guess I'm more looking at the ones at 2022 that was 1.6 million. I mean, that's getting to be almost three years old as of 2025. Are we in different stages of those activities? And I just know there's other communities around there, like Prince George would be one, and British Columbia has a different set of provincial legislation, but they actually do take title and then they will sell those properties back or off. And I mean, I'm just curious to see where we're at and what stage are we moving with those. And given that we don't want to get to that point, obviously, you want to work with people to that, but there comes a point in time, three years running here, that something has to be done, right? Because now, other citizens is out significant dollars.
Thank you, Chair. Through you to councillor Boyle. So, yes, we do have a tax enforcement process, so the first process obviously is you're made aware of the arrears that are owed on your property. If you do not pay those, a lien is applied to your property so that when you do go to sell that property, the taxes need to be paid to remove that lien. As we get into that process, we work with the individual property owners for payment plans. We have been in the past fairly successful with payment plans, although not recently. That seemed to be a lot more of a difficult situation. And ultimately, the end of the day, yes, we do pursue taking the properties and selling them for tax title. We have one right now, which I certainly won't disclose to you, but that is very close to that process, a significant commercial property that we would be moving forward on and taking over, and then we turn around and we sell it for those arrears. Certainly, that's a last resort. That's the last thing we want to do, is be taking people's properties, whether that be residential or commercial. Our preference is that we work with them to be able to pay their taxes, because our experience over time has been that vast, vast majority of people want to pay their taxes, but they have a reason or a rationale why they're unable to. So, yes, so we are actively pursuing that, have been actively pursuing that. The only sort of interlude in that was last year, when our new tax system came on, we did have to pull back a little bit because of resources needed for the new tax system, so there may have been a little bit of a lag there, but certainly in the last, you know, nine to 12 months, we've been actively involved, so thank you.
Thank you, Director Acker, and councillor Boyle. Any further questions, council? Councillor Warren?
Thank you, through the Chair. I had a couple of questions, but on the arrears, let's see here. So, I think earlier on in the report, you mentioned that the taxation revenue is up 460,000, but then we're also talking about $3 million in arrears. Are those like connected, or are those two separate things?
Thank you, Chair. Through you to councillor Warren. They are somewhat connected, so the revenues are recognised in the year that we earn them, so that 460,000 is recognised. What we do every year to meet our audit standards is, we actually go through a process to determine what portion of those accounts in arrears we feel are going to be doubtful, and we're going to end up having to have some money set aside to be able to fund those, so there's an offsetting expense for that. That expense is less than that 460 for this year, certainly, but we do account for it, so it's connected, but it's a little bit disconnected in that there's revenues received, and then there's provisions made for ones that we feel are allowance for doubtful accounts. And when we do those allowance for doubtful taxes, what we do is, we do also try to take into account the value of the property, right? So, you know, somebody may owe us $160,000, but if we feel confident we'll be able to sell that property for $160,000, then there's no provision made. Whereas if it was the other way around, $160,000 owed in taxes, and we don't feel that property would be able to be sold for that, then we would make a provision for that difference. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just another question on that. I believe you had mentioned that affordability was a main issue with the arrears. Is there any other factors that we see that are, you know, contributing to that?
Thank you, Chair. Through you to councillor Warren. So, affordability certainly is the major issue. That's the one we hear the most in terms of why people can't or are unable to pay their taxes in a timely manner. Contributing to that is just sort of the overall, you know, municipal and provincial economy, it seems. Majority of people who come to us who have trouble paying, we do try to get them into payment plans. As I said, that's even been difficult lately. So, it's really a reflection, I think, of our economic situation. As we do move forward, there are more and more people having difficulties. You'll see in the report as well, the bulk of those arrears are residential, so it's residential where. I think everybody's faced a lot of inflationary pressures, and it's made it that much more difficult for people to be able to come forward and pay their taxes, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Through the Chair, I just had a couple of questions about the Event Centre. So, I mean, we're definitely seeing increased revenues as well as increased expenses, but to me, that means, that's great, that means we're busy there. Appreciate that. And I was trying to, I didn't see it in the financial statement, but I think you mentioned that we're currently looking at a net loss of 500,000, so that would represent the subsidy that the city would provide. Okay, yeah, because when I was kind of looking at the different statements, it looked like we had a surplus in our revenues of 431, net profit in the food and beverage of 502, but I believe that net profit of the food and beverage is built right into the overall net surplus in the revenues, correct?
We can have Event Centre stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question. You are exactly right as how that rolls in. The two statements that you see, one's the overall of the facility as a whole, the second one is strictly just food and beverage, just really to be able to show everyone the impact that that makes by having that in-house, but those revenues do come into that full income statement, so they are reflecting in what the subsidy is for the city. So, when I look at this income statement, for me, I'm considering our sales were $428,000 ahead of budget, so the funding that the city provides into the facility and the revenues that we've generated because of, well, you know, we've had a really good year and all the events that we've had, so we're that far ahead of budget at this point in the year.
Thank you, appreciate that. And then just one final question is, I was looking forward in the statement, where does it reflect the city of Moose Jaw subsidy? Is that line item showing up in the statement?
Thank you, Chair. Through you to Counselor Warren. It doesn't show up as a separate line in the statement, but it is part of the Parks and Recreation Areas, Community Services.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Warren. Excuse me, counsel? Any further questions? Counselor Eby?
Thank you. Well, I will move that Communication CC 2024-0244 regarding the City of Moose Jaw Third Quarter Financial Report be received and filed.
Thank you, Counselor Eby. Counsel, we have any last minute questions or discussion before we call the question? I don't see anybody in the queue. Oh, pardon me, City Manager? Okay, sorry. I don't see anyone in the queue, so I will call the question. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Next item on our agenda this evening or this afternoon, I guess, is Communication 0257 from the City Clerk's Office regarding interim council appointments to Moose Jaw Board of Police Commissioners.
Thank you, Chair. I can speak to that. Good afternoon, counsel. The purpose of the report in front of you this afternoon is to provide you with information to make a decision on the Moose Jaw Board of Police Commissioner and council appointments that are required for the balance of 2024. So, the Moose Jaw Police Service is governed by the Police Act 1990 and the City of Moose Jaw Board of Police Commissioners Bylaw Number 5599. The Police Act 1990 sets out that a municipality with a population of 5,000 or more shall establish through bylaw a Board of Police Commissioners consisting of not less than three persons. It further prescribes that a board member who holds office as a member of council and loses office as a member of council also loses office as a Board of Police Commissioners member. The Act also addresses vacancies on the board by noting that where, where a vacancy occurs, the council within one month of the vacancy shall appoint a person to replace the former board member. Bylaw Number 5599, the Moose Jaw Board of Police Commissioners Bylaw, sets out that the board shall consist of five members, including the mayor, two council members, and two citizens of Moose Jaw. The two council vacancies have occurred with the outcome of the November 13th, 2024 municipal election. City Council is being asked this evening to consider council nominees presented in Communication Number CC 2024-00257 to be appointed to the Board of Police Commissioners to the end of term on December 31st, 2024 in order to comply with Section 27 of the Police Act 1990. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Eby?
Thank you. I'm willing to make the motions, but I just, can I just make a comment about the police board before I? I really have thought about this a lot in the last year or so, that the composition of the board really is majority of council, and that, to me, makes it perhaps a little bit more political than what the police board should be. And so, going forward, and not at this point in time, but maybe as the new board is put together in 2025, that could be looked at, that perhaps there should be, the majority should be not members of council, but just add maybe a couple more citizens at large so that then it's not just a Board of Council, because I know that that's been questioned in the past, why we even have citizen appointments when the majority of the vote is councillors and mayor anyways. So, just be my, my thought, and I'm not putting my name forward, so it will have, it won't come from me, but perhaps whoever ends up there can have that discussion with their board. Anyways, I will move that a ballot vote be taken to determine the two councillors appointed to the Moose Jaw Board of Police Commissioners for the interim period from May, November 25th, 2024 to December 31st, 2024, and that the City Manager and Director of Finance be appointed ballot scrutineers.
Thank you. Counselor Eby? Counselor Looney?
Thank you, Counselor Logan. Well, just a comment in regards to the comment that Counselor Eby made about the composition of the, of the board for the police commissioners. I mean, obviously, that is part of the Police Act and would have to go through legislation to be changed, so it's probably not something that would happen right away when it comes to having to change legislation, but it's certainly not something that I think maybe we shouldn't consider for the same reasons as Counselor Eby says. I have heard kind of the same things about the composition of that board and it's, you know, sometimes feels like it's just another committee of council in a way, because there's three people there, the mayor and two appointees and then two citizens, but it is in legislation, so that won't happen overnight, just as a warning there, right? But anyways, those are just my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Looney? I don't see anybody else in the queue. We do have a motion moved by Counselor Eby on the floor, so I'll call the question on the first one. All in favor? And that is carried. Counselor Eby?
And I will move that Counselor Logan, Counselor Looney, and Counselor Boyle be appointed to the Moose Jaw Board of Police Commissioners. Nominated? Sorry. Be nominated, be nominated, sorry, to the Moose Jaw Board of Police Commissioners and that nomination cease.
Thank you, Counselor Eby. I'll call the question. All in favor? And that is carried. So then we'll get, I don't, everybody have their little pad to, if counsel's unaware? Now, we just wait and play the Jeopardy musics for a few minutes here while that, they tabulate the results?
You have appointed Counselor Logan and Counselor Looney to the Moose Jaw Board of Police Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Eby?
And I will move that all marked ballots be destroyed.
All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. There we go. Next item on the agenda this evening is Communication 0249 from the Community Services Department regarding discretionary use application 693 Fairford Street West. And for that, I will recuse, but before I deal, I'll pass the gavel to your worship.
Next, we will deal with Communication Number 0249 from the Community Services Department, re-discretionary use application of 693 Fairford Street West. Administration will present the report. If I can call on Director Blay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're actually going to request that this report be tabled until the Monday, December 2nd meeting to allow for the zoning bylaw changes to be discussed on this evening's agenda first. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Blay. We will need a motion to see that that is tabled. Counselor Looney? Thank you.
Thank you, your worship.
I'm sorry.
That's all good. Thank you, your worship. I will move that the discretionary use application for a private club on Lot 1, Block Par 98, Plan 93 MJ 04253, Extension 0, civically known as 693 Fairford Street West, be tabled until the 2nd of December, correct? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call the question. So, all in favor? And that is carried.
I have to, oh, resume, Chair. Thank you. That concludes, I believe that concludes our agenda this evening for Committee of the Whole, and the Committee of the Whole begs to report as follows.
Next, we have reports of standing committees of City Council. First, I will need a motion that-
Your worship, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We actually have a motion of the report of the Committee of the Whole received, be taken as read, received and adopted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Number eight on the agenda.
Oh, I was, I'm sorry, my bad. I'm sorry about that, yeah. Next, we will move into the adoption of the report of the Committee of the Whole. I will need a motion that the report of the Committee of the Whole be taken as read, received, and adopted. I will need a mover. Counselor Eby and a seconder. Counselor Looney? All in favor? That is carried. Next, we have reports of standing committees of City Council. First, I will need a motion that the report of the Executive Committee meeting dated October 21st, 2024 be taken as read. I will need a mover. Counselor Logan and a seconder. Counselor Delorye? All in favor? That is carried. I will need a motion that the report of the Personnel Committee meeting dated October 21st, 2024 be taken as read. I will need a mover. Counselor Delorye, a seconder. Counselor Warren? All in favor? And that is carried. Next, we will move into matters arising from reports of standing committees. Do any councillors wish to bring forward an item from the Executive Committee meeting minutes of October 21st, 2024? Okay, seeing none. Next, I will need a motion that the report of the Executive Committee meeting dated October 21st, 2024 be received and adopted. Moved by Counselor Delorye, seconded by Counselor Logan. All in favor? And that is carried. Do any councillors wish to bring forward an item from the Personnel Committee meeting minutes of October 21st, 2024? Next, I will need a motion that the report of the Personnel Committee meeting dated October 21st, 2024 be received and adopted. Moved by Counselor Eby, seconded by Counselor Boyle. All in favor? And that is carried. Next, we have reports from advisory and other committees. First, we have the report of the Accessible Community Advisory Committee minutes from October 10th, 2024. Counselor Logan?
Thank you, your worship. The Accessible Community Advisory Committee met on October 10th, and there's nothing to ask of counsel that came out of that meeting, but I just wanted to clarify, I had some questions surrounding the Global Network for Age Friendly Cities and Communities, and folks were asking what the city's involvement was and were asking me to expand on that and whatnot on behalf of the committee. This, in fact, is not a committee initiative. This is a standalone committee outside of the Accessible Community Committee. So, you know, if anybody in the community wants more information, they can certainly look up and speak to Ms. Boychuk from that committee to get more information. I'd be happy to direct you in the right, in the right direction, but certainly that's another group outside of this committee. So, if you have any questions about that, certainly reach out to Christine Boychuk and that group, and she'd be happy to answer those questions for folks, so. With that being said, I would move that the minutes of the Accessible Community Advisory Committee meeting held on October 10th, 2024 be received and adopted.
Thank you, Counselor Looney. All in favor? And that is carried. Next, we have the report of Parks, Recreation and Facilities Advisory Committee minutes from October 22nd, 2024. Counselor Looney, will you please present the minutes?
Thank you, your worship. I'm rising to present the minutes from the Parks and Recreation meeting that was held on the 22nd of October, and there are a few items that require approval of City Council. The first is that the 2025 Parks and Recreation Rates and Fee Proposal, along with the potential implementation of a facility improvement fee, be forwarded to City Council for consideration during the 2025 budget deliberations, and that the amended Parks and Recreation Rates and Fees Policy attached hereto as Attachment B and forming part of these minutes be approved.
May I have a seconder? Counselor Eby?
Thank you. So, I'll just ask through you, your worship, that maybe Mr. Blay wants to provide a quick update on, on this for the public and maybe for council, quickly.
Thank you. Yeah, so, as part of our, so typically, the rates and fees, approval of our rates and fees would go through our advisory committee for approval at a subsequent council meeting. With this year's proposal, we are requesting that it be considered during budget deliberations because we're looking to implement a facility improvement fee as part of an effort to gain some additional funds for capital improvements to our recreation facilities. A lot of the information around that fee has been provided in the report attached to tonight's agenda. So, that's the, I guess, the big change from what we would have seen in previous years. And the second part of that motion is just amendments to our rates and fees policy. That's something that's reviewed on an annual basis to align with how we come up with our rates and fees for recreation. So, the, the second part of the approval would be to approve the policy changes that are being recommended, mostly affecting, I believe, the student rate as well as rentals, different rental opportunities at the Yarra Centre in regards to the track. But again, happy to answer any questions specific to the report, if there are any.
Counselor Looney, do you have a question or is Counselor Warren? Yes, sorry, yeah, Counselor Warren?
Thank you, your worship. Question of the administration, so the facility improvement fee, I see that, that is what's being put forward. Can you, I have a two-part question. Can you just give me some examples of, you know, what that, what that would do for the facilities, like what that money would be going towards? And then could you also just highlight the benefits to the users of the recreational facilities, you know, that they'll experience with those fees?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So, yeah, this is what, the report that would be going to budget would be similar to what's in front of you today. Again, we're not looking for approval on this, we're looking for approval to have this discussion at budget, but essentially, it's a fee that would be added to drop-in admissions, monthly memberships, annual memberships, three-month memberships, hourly rentals for ice, turf, pool, as well as a per-participant fee on our outdoor spaces, sports grounds and diamonds. So, rather than go with a generic rate increase this year, we would opt out of that and implement our facility improvement fee. That, all revenues generated through the facility improvement fee would go into a capital reserve. capital reserve for future improvements or renewal to our recreation facilities. Based on current usage numbers, we would currently project approximately $75,000 a year, $73,000 to be generated through this fee that would go into the reserve. And then the reserve, I guess, request to access the reserve would be done through the annual budget process with council, if there were specific projects in mind, but would just, essentially just another funding source for our capital program to be able to renew our facilities in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you very much. I like the concept, and yeah, looking forward to, I guess, thank you for bringing this forward and looking forward to having more discussions at budget. Thank you.
Sir, Counselor Boyle?
Sir, just in my mind, try to get it straight here through your chair, Mr. Blay. So that, that fee would then be over and above an increase as well? Or we're just saying we're bringing one fee as a whole this year, and then future years it would be, I'm thinking more in terms of, we're going to charge this blanket fee across the board. Just help me understand that, but it's not that fee plus? Because every year, what we're talking about here is raising fees on a lot of these community groups who rent these facilities, so we're not, we're not double-dipping, I guess, make sure I understand that correctly. And I mean, we'll have this discussion at budget too, but just clarify that for me.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Yeah, so this would be a fee on top of our base fee, and what we're proposing in 2025 is to have zero increase to our base fee. So we would just focus on the implementation of the facility improvement fee in order to make things, ensure things remain affordable for our users. And then moving forward, any increases that would occur, say in 2026, would happen on the base fee. The facility improvement fee would likely stay the same.
Thank you, Director Blay. I do believe that we have the motion on the floor, and it has been seconded by Counselor Eby. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Eby.
That's okay. I'll just begin at the end. And I know we're going to have this discussion again at budget, but seeing as we're into it a little bit, so the, the surcharge that you talked about, would that go into the same reserve as the Parks and Rec levy? Is that all gonna kind of go together? It's different. It's a different thing.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I believe those are two separate items. The fee that's collected, or the funds collected through the Parks and Rec levy are, go immediately to our capital program and are used to deliver capital projects in that given year. These fees would be set aside in a reserve, separate from that.
Okay, thanks. We'll have more discussion.
Okay, seeing no further inquiries. Madam City Clerk, do we need to state what the motion is again, just for clarity, or can we just go right to a vote?
If, thank you, your worship. If you wish to have it read back, I can read it back. If you are, if council is comfortable, you can proceed with calling the question.
I think we will call into question then, so, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Thank you, your worship. The next item in, or on the Parks and Rec minutes this evening is that the 2025 cemetery rates attached hereto as Attachment A and forming part of these minutes be approved, and that the rates be made effective the 1st of January, 2025.
Thank you, Counselor Looning. May I have a seconder? Counselor Logan? We will go into a vote, so all in favor? Seeing none opposed, and that is carried.
Thank you. My escribe is bouncing around again, Ms. Wickie, so bear with me, everyone. That the next item is a motion to move that the updated arena usage policy attached hereto as Attachment A and forming part of these minutes be approved.
Thank you, Counselor Looning. Counselor Eby will be the seconder. All in favor? Opposed? And that is carried.
Thank you, your worship. And with that, I will move that the minutes of the Parks and Recreation and Facilities Advisory Committee meeting minutes held on the 22nd of October 24 be received as presented.
And seconded by Counselor Warren? All in favor? And that is carried. That the minutes of the Investment Committee of October 30th, 2024 be received and adopted. I knew that time.
Okay, thank you, your worship. So next on the agenda is the minutes of the Investment Committee meeting, which was held on the 30th of October, and have a few highlights from that meeting. So as, as some of the previous counselors will know and the public, we have a moderate-term portfolio and a long-term portfolio, and just some performance highlights from the last quarter. In the moderate-term portfolio, it ended the third quarter with a balance of just over $26 million and has a return of 8.28% year-to-date. The return since inception was 5.22%, which is above the annual return objective of the portfolio, which is 4 and 1/4. And the asset mix of this portfolio was 63% fixed income and cash and 37% equities. The long-term portfolio ended the third quarter with a balance of $82,596,439 and was up 12.25% year-to-date. The return since inception was 7 and 1/4%, which is above the annual return objective of the portfolio, which is 6%. The asset mix of this portfolio was 68% equities and 32% fixed income and cash. I can tell you, just as a side note, the markets have literally, I hate to say this, but shot the lights out since about a year ago last year. I remember because I'm, as some of you know, I'm also in this business, at the end of October 2023, I thought, oh my gosh, it's going to be the same as 2022. It's going to be a horrible year. And in the middle of November, it turned around, and it's just, the markets have been really, really strong ever since. So if that's any good news, I mean, we do have ups and downs in the market as we move along, but this year has been, has been a really good year in the markets. It's not over yet, though. The past is not indicative of the future. The first three quarters of 2024, as I mentioned, have seen positive returns for the city's investment portfolios, with returns since inception above the targeted levels for 2024. And since 2019, the city's invested funds have generated returns of just under $35 million in both portfolios, moderate and long-term. So the Investment Committee, of course, takes a long-term view of our investments, the city's investments, which allows the city to weather short-term market downturns and also long-term gains or shortfalls wherever. But because we're a corporation, the corporation hopefully shall never end. It's very different than looking at your own personal investments. So we have a long-term view of the corporation, of the city of Musshaw, and the city's investment managers will continue to monitor the moderate-term portfolio and maintain a slight overweight equity position in that portfolio. And the city's investment managers will transition the overweight fixed income portion of the long-term portfolio into cash equivalents to take advantage of any market declines due to short-term volatility. So I'll just thank Mr. Acker for the summary that he provided me this evening to, to highlight what has happened in the Investment Committee and what has happened in the portfolio. And with that, I will move that the minutes of the Investment Committee meeting held the 30th of October, 2024 be received as presented, and that doesn't hinder any debate. Thank you, your worship.
Counselor Warren?
Thank you, your worship. Question on the investment earnings, so Counselor Looning talked about the 4% and the 6%, I believe, targets, and in both cases, we've exceeded those. And I get the year's not over, but my question is, do we, do we, when we're exceeding our targets, is that money reinvested in something else? Or, or is it, I guess, used in the budget to displace over expenditures?
Thank you, your worship, through you to Counselor Warren. So it really is dependent on the year. What we do look at, though, years like this, is if we do have shortfalls, we would recommend to council through the budget process to direct those excess earnings to those. We do what we call an investment drawdown report that you'll consider at budget time, and there will be additional monies this year certainly, and we do have some recommendations for what those are utilized for, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So just, so then at budget time, we'll have an opportunity to see the year-end results and, I guess, make decisions at that time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Acker. So seeing that we have a motion, if I could have a seconder? Counselor Warren? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, that is carried. Next, we will have the report of the Youth Advisory Committee minutes from October 30th, 2024. I am reporting on the Youth Advisory Committee minutes as a former council member sat on this committee. I would report that there are no motions of council required. Therefore, I move that the minutes of the Youth Advisory Committee of October 30th, 2024 be received and adopted. If I can have a seconder? Counselor Boyle? All in favor? None opposed, and that is carried. Does any member wish to bring, excuse me, does any member wish to bring forward a notice of motion? Counselor Boyle?
I would move that City Council meetings begin at 4:30 PM and all other committee meetings, executive personnel to follow immediately after effective January 13th, 2025.
Thank you, Counselor Boyle. There are no motions for this meeting. Next, I would like to do introduction of bylaw, number 5727, zoning bylaw amendment 2024 bracket 5, CC-2024-0248. Your worship? Counselor Looning?
Your worship, I think it's in order, I believe, because Counselor Logan has declared a conflict here, you need a motion to appoint Counselor Eby as the acting deputy mayor for this portion of the agenda, and I would so move that if that's what Ms. Wickie requires. Because Counselor Logan is the deputy mayor and he's out. He's declared a conflict, so.
Thank you, Counselor Looning, yeah, okay. We'll need, need a mover and seconder, that Counselor Eby be appointed as acting deputy mayor for consideration of bylaw number 5727, zoning bylaw amendment 2024 bracket 5.
I'll so move that, your worship.
Thank you very much, Counselor Looning. Patrick, thank you very much, Counselor Boyle. All in favor? None opposed, and that motion is carried. We will need a mover and seconder, that acting deputy mayor, Counselor Eby, be allowed to introduce bylaw number 5727, zoning bylaw amendment 2024 bracket 5. Counselor Boyle, Counselor Warren, all in favor? None opposed, and that is carried. That motion is carried, sorry.
The purpose of the proposed bylaw is to rezone Lot 1, Block Par, I don't think I'm on my mic, it's not on. The purpose of the proposed bylaw is to rezone Lot 1, Block Par 9, Plan 93 MJ 0423253, Extension 0, civically known as 693 Fairford Street West from M2 F2 Heavy Industrial District and F2 Flood Fringe Overlay District to M1 F2 Light Industrial District and F2 Flood Fringe Overlay District, also to accommodate a proposed use of the space as a private club as listed as a discretionary use within the M1 District.
We will need a mover and seconder. Counselor Delorye, Counselor Looning? All in favor?
Yep.
There we are, and-
Nope, now I gotta read this part. Bylaw 5727, zoning bylaw amendment 2024-5.
There we are. All in favor?
Nope, nope, nope.
We will need a mover and seconder. That we now go into Committee of the Whole. My apologies. We'll need a mover and seconder that bylaw number 5727 be now read a second time. That is going to be moved by Counselor Looning, seconded by Counselor Boyle. All in favor? And that motion is carried.
Now I'll just read this part again, bylaw 5727, zoning amendment bylaw 2024-5.
We will need a mover and seconder, that we now go into Committee of the Whole under the chairmanship of acting deputy mayor, Counselor Eby, to consider bylaw number 5727. Moved by Counselor Boyle, second, Counselor Warren, all in favor? And that motion is carried. And that motion is carried.
I will call the meeting of the committee of the whole to order. Are there any council members who wish to speak respecting this proposed bylaw?
Thank you, Counselor Eby. Just sit over in Counselor Logan's chair, right? Just quickly, this is, just for the public. First of all, I want to say that it's unfortunate that private club is in here. It just sounds so, yeah, anyways, not right. But this is for the, for the Royal Canadian Legion. And I'm happy to be able to, you know, approve this bylaw for this development for the Legion. They've been, they've been wanting to do this for a while. And, and, and so just for the public, it is for the Legion and it's for their operations. It's not what the word, yeah, anyways, whatever. I'll just, I'll just stop, moving on. Thank you. Thank you. I should have just moved into Counselor Logan's chair, but I did not. Thank you, Counselor Looning. Now I will need, I'm going to let Counselor Looning move that clause-by clause consideration of the bylaw be and is hereby dispensed with and that the said bylaw be approved in its entirety. All those in favor? And that is carried. Your committee of the whole to consider bylaw number 5727, zoning bylaw amendment 2024-5 begs report that the bylaw passed this committee without amendment.
We'll need a mover and a seconder that the report of the committee of the whole be received and adopted. That can be moved by Counselor Eby, seconded by Counselor Delory. All in favor? And that carried unanimously. We'll need a mover and a seconder that bylaw number 5727 be submitted for third reading, fourth with. If I can have a mover? Counselor Warren, seconder? Counselor Delory? All in favor? And that is carried unanimously. We'll need a mover and a seconder that bylaw number 5727 be now read a third time, adopted, signed by the mayor and city clerk, dated and sealed. Counselor Eby is the mover, Counselor Looning is the seconder. All in favor? And that motion is carried.
Bylaw number 5727, zoning bylaw amendment 2024-5.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Are there any inquiries to be asked of city administration? Seeing none? I'm sorry, Counselor Boyle.
Just, just wondering, on the recent snow event here, could I just ask administration, what were our service times in relation to the policy we have in play? And you could just make a comment on that? And just curious about that. A lot of comments, questions for snowfall of the year, so probably be expected, but just kind of curious about that.
Thank you, Chair. If I heard that correctly, you're looking for service times after the event? Yeah, okay. So after the snowfall event's done, according to the winter maintenance policy, we're looking at 24 hours to, to complete plowing on priority one locations. And then as we move through that policy, priority two is 48 through to 72 and 96 hours.
Do we know how we did on this snow event? I guess is the more pertinent question. How do we measure against that policy, I guess, is more what I think many people are wondering.
Thank you, Chair. So we had an event last Thursday and then piled into that another event on Saturday, Sunday. So we're working, we worked through the first one and then the second one came along. So on Sunday, we flipped back to a new distinct event and returned to priority one locations. And if you look at when the snowfall was done on Sunday afternoon, I think you could argue that we are over 24 hours for priority one locations. However, the winds were blowing from the northwest quite, quite significantly. And I know that we were seeing drifting Sunday afternoon up until about 5 o'clock when the winds subsided. So I think there's a bit of interpretation on, on the conclusion of a snow event, but certainly having a second one piled two days after the, two days after the first one has impacted our services. We will be through priority ones tonight and continue working on priority two tomorrow morning.
One more follow-up, just indulge me. Have we considered potentially GPS tracking and reporting publicly to citizens on that? Sorry? Have we considered potentially GPS tracking and reporting publicly to citizens through our city app just to know where our plows are at certain point in times? When they're out, when that's going on? Just a lot of people question where they are, what's going on. And we know they're out and I think we get reported on that and hear the complaints. But just to, has that been a consideration? Maybe it's in a budget, but I'll throw it out there.
We do have GPS capabilities on our equipment for, for geo-locating. And I can recall a few years ago, conversations about connecting that to GAS and making that forward-facing. That isn't something that, that I've been discussing with, with my staff at Public Works at this time. I think if I were to give an off-the-cuff response, I think the hardware's there. I think that's something we could put forward. Be a matter of connecting the, the outputs and our staff at GAS.
Thank you, Counselor Boyle. And thank you, Director Harleton. There are two answers to inquiries for this meeting. The first being cost responsibility for work on Ninth Avenue Southwest by Bradley Street. And the next being the light pole in front of the Mushtah Police Services. Counselor Eby, do you wish to answer to the inquiry number nine?
Yes, please. Thank you to city administration and Mr. Blay for the answer to this. I don't know if anyone's ever noticed the light post in front of the police station, but it's the last original light post, City of Mushtah. And it has the city insignia on the bottom and it's, could be really quite lovely. I don't know if that's the right word for, for a light pole, but it's in bad repair. So it's been on my radar for quite a long time. And so it is the responsibility of SAS Power, but we have, through city administration, asked SAS Power if it would be potential for the city or perhaps the downtown association to restore it and, and keep it. I would really hope that it doesn't get changed out. I think they said in 2026, they were going to change it out and put in just the regular one like ever, all the rest in downtown Mushtah. But when we were discussing this one day here at the Public Art Committee, someone said that they'd been camping somewhere northern Saskatchewan and in the campground there, the original Mushtah City Light Standard, one or more, are in that campground. And we only have one left here. So I'm really hoping that through the, the conversations Mr. Blay has with SAS Power and however that shakes out, that we'll be able to keep that light standard in downtown Mushtah and restore it because it's a really great piece of history of Mushtah and it really, it, it looks really great in front of, it would look really great if it was restored. So thank you for the information on this.
Thank you, Counselor Eby. Excuse me. The next special meeting of city council is scheduled for Wednesday, November 27th, 2024. And the next regular meeting of city council is scheduled for Monday, December 2nd, 2024. And with that, we are adjourned.